So similar to last month, we're gonna call the meeting to order. But before we get too far, there has not yet been a chair appointed for the zoning board, so I will need a motion from this board to appoint a chair for tonight's meeting only. For, yes, just for tonight. Is there a second? Is that your motion? Okay, so there's a motion on the table to appoint John Norma as chairperson for tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. I guess just all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And he knows. Hi, John, you'll be the chairperson for this evening. Sure if you can just start as usual with the.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Fudge of allegiance. Fudge of allegiance. The first item is under administrative items. Oh, apologies. If you don't mind, I'm sorry. Angie, if you don't mind, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Right.
Thank you. So the first item under administrative items is the adoption of the meeting minutes from the February 7th meeting. Does anyone wanna put forth a motion on the minutes?
I would mind the adopt.
All right, we have a motion from Steven Minor to adopt the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Jack McCann. All those in favor of adopting the minutes as they stand now, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So it seems that we we can adopt the minutes from the last meeting.
And also just note for the record, I think it was at the last meeting, there was discussion on meeting minutes from December, and I said I would look into that issue. It, we've determined in the legal department that we will just have to leave the minutes as unadopted. So they can stand as minutes for the meeting, but they just won't have been adopted since we don't have a forum to be able to vote on it.
All right, thank you. And so the first item, your old business is case PLZBA 2024-0001. Property is at 1 St. Joseph's Street. Is the applicant here this evening? If you don't mind, could you step up to the microphone? Please tell us your name and where you live, please.
Back end. Underneath again.
Testing. Jeff Rea, By Myrtle Avenue, Troy.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. All right, so we got. Do you mind if I pull this back a little bit? I mean, I'd love to get closer. Can't see the screen.
Okay.
My only concern is we sometimes we have problems with the microphones, feedback.
Okay, or can we tilt it?
Looks like Angie's taking care of that.
Awesome, thank you. Yes, thank you. All right, first to get before we talk about some of the concerns last meeting. There's a couple things, since we've been investing for over 35 years in Troy in single multifamily homes, we find that the tenants stay longer when they have these three things that are really valuable to them. And one is off-street parking, two is a yard, and three garage space. So let's get into some of the concerns we had the last meeting regarding the placement of our garage, which is gonna be a stick build on an existing lot of 25 by. One concern was on the left side. We can see a setback on the left side, which is a guideline for, I know the zoning is stating five feet, which we show five inches or six inch on the left side. On the right side, to my knowledge, is not a concern to own the lot, which is lot number two. So on the right side, you'll see the owner is Fine Fine Will Properties. Now that's a vacant lot. And right next to that, there are two six-unit buildings. It's about 12,000 square feet. And behind that is another five-unit building, and they have behind them, they have off-street parking, which is all paved. And this lot is grass. Right in, it's about 25 by 100 that goes to Fourth Street. Right next to our lot, all the way to Fourth Street is a grass lot. And these multi-units have been using that for years. I think the concern the board was, hey Jeff, what happens if someone decides to build on that lot and have your garage five inches from this vacant lot? It's, in my opinion, it's highly unlikely that anybody will build there. We've owned the building for over, our building for over 20 years. And these families, they have no green space other than to play in that lot. And those are all three, they're large units in those multi-units. They're about 1,000 square feet, three bedrooms. They're not small studios, so there's definitely families that are in those spaces. And the concern also is that, hey, if they do build, how are they gonna build? Are we gonna have a problem with the setback from our garage if you approve as proposed? And as you see, you pretty, the depth of it is 25 at the street, meaning the vacant lot, that's grass right now. And it's, and it sort of curves back to 50 feet. So when they build, if they do propose to build, they're gonna be building off of Fourth Street. Then you can have the proper setbacks, in my opinion, so that way you're not going to say, hey Jeff, your garage is way too close to this. What if we, if there's some structure that's gonna be built on that? So that's me just, me talking about the first concern that you had last. The next one was the setback from the street. Now, we do have some photos. Can we just scroll down to take a look at the photos of what St. Joseph's looks like? I did provide them this way, so it just, when they were put in. So it is on a hill. And you can see, as I stated in our last meeting, that all these properties are very close to the street. There's setback maybe five feet. Yeah, I can't. If you want, you can scroll each photo, and then I can just explain each of them.
Okay, all right.
Unless, unless you all understand the photos. This is across the street. So across the street, multifamily, and then there's a garage right next, a two-car garage, right, right across from, from our number one. So there's our building three. As you can see, the curb is right there. So the curb cut is right there, couple feet from, five feet from the house. And I know the concern from the board was, hey Jeff, we're trying to meet like with like, and our proposal is showing our garage 16, five from the street. And I know your setback is, hey, our guideline is 30 feet, but we only have a 50-foot lot. But as you can see, we're farther back than any of the houses that are, that are on this lot, so we're gonna be sitting back. The concern is if we push the garage back further than proposed the lot from, from the street, as you can see, it slows down. So we're gonna have to fill, fill in to make that level. And the more you push it back, and save, you say, hey Jeff, can we push it five feet from the boundary line? It, it's a cliff. It goes down. So originally, we were talking about how much money we're gonna spend. We're over budget on this already. Originally, please scroll back, maybe to the, to the proposed stick build. Original, this one up?
This one?
Correct, one up. So originally, we were thinking about a pre-engineered build. Those pre-engineered buildings are pretty inexpensive to put up. Two-car garage, 24 by 24, 34 by 30, they're 12,600? That's installed, and they put them up in one day. They come up from South Carolina, they put them up. We were really concerned at the quality, even though they were saying that good quality. We own our properties for a long period of time, and we're really concerned about what we were getting for our product there. Stick build proposed, we're jumping up to 30 grand to put this up. So all in, we're probably about 50,000 or so. So if this board says, hey Jeff, you know, push it back another five feet or five feet from that, we're probably gonna have to put a, bring in a ton more fill, gonna have to put a probably a retaining roll up, which is gonna cost us more money, and we're probably just gonna be over, over budget, which we already are. So I'm trying to accommodate to the guidelines, but also show that, hey, we really put some thought into the placement of this garage. We've already, as I said, this lot was not maintained for over 20 years. We picked it up from the city. We already put over $6,000 into this lot to clear it, because it was a mess. And, and hopefully, we can get your blessing. I do have, I don't see in the notes here, from planning, I do have the stamps. Because we did go through planning, and I do have the stamped paper, whatever their approval, approval from them as well. For today's meeting, because I know that you guys wanted me to get that first. Any questions?
Does the board have any additional question?
No.
I do, just clarifying. So the lot, the three lots have emerged, and that's been approved by the planning commission, so.
That's correct.
All three lots are one.
Yes.
I completely, I appreciated the photos. I know you saw those previously. You know, I went out, and you know, I understand, you know, the grading issues, so I understand from a depth perspective exactly why you placed it. Where you did your encountering the cross slope across the property along the, you know, parallel to the street in both directions. And my question is much more about the side setback, because it seems like you're dealing with the same kind of cross grade. Even if you were to hold that five-foot side setback, what is preventing you from moving the garage five feet from the side?
That's a good question. As I started out, we talked about value, and we talked about off-street parking. We talked about yard space. Now, if the board says, hey Jeff, push it over another five feet, we're gonna encroach that, that extra parking space that we have and, and the small yard that we already, that we have. So we're gonna be pushing that into that, that space. So I'm trying to save as much as I can. So, so again, that's why we put a lot of thought into this. And you're right, saying that we, there's a lot of obstacles here. It's a ton. And, and that's why it's costing us so much with even the excavation, because it was so overgrown, you know, the trees on there, if any of you've gone to the site, tree stumps that we have to pull out of there to get it to where it needs to be. It's gonna be beautiful when we get done. We're gonna pave it, and it's gonna be really a nice sight.
I don't have any other questions.
John, you had a question?
No.
Oh, sorry.
My question is last half. From this vote, because I've done work for Mr. Ray. Okay. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to vote on this.
Thank you, I understand. I'm sorry, I, I thought.
Other than that.
All right, so seems that there are no further questions from the board. Is there anyone in attendance here in this room that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, I don't, speak in favor, apologies. Angie, is there anyone participating online?
No.
Okay. Then is there anyone here at the meeting that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, then there's no one online, so there's there's no comment either in favor or opposed. Seems like we're at a point where we could entertain a motion from the board. Now, my recollection is that at last month's meeting, we voted on the seeker. So we can move forward. We don't have to worry about the seeker, correct?
Seeker hasn't, yeah, seeker hasn't changed, so you can you can move forward with the vote without the seeker, because that will carry over from last month's meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, you raised your hand.
No, that's, I was gonna ask that same question.
Okay. Good question. Are we voting on, we're voting on these two variants separate, perhaps?
So that depends on the motion that's made. You can take them together or separate.
Okay.
Okay, and so with no further comment, with seeker taken care of, I'm gonna open it up to the members of the board, with, with the exception of Jack McCann, who's confused himself. Would anyone like to put forward a motion on the application?
I would put forward a motion, we approve the application as requested in all. I did a site visit. Everything that Mr. Ray has described is 100% accurate from what I saw. I went up and down that street three times. He's on the money with laws up.
Okay, and so we have a motion to approve the, to approve both points in the application. And so do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made.
Discussion on the actual area variance criteria. If somebody could have that discussion as part of the motion, please.
The, the points of.
For the area of variances, yeah.
Be my understanding that you wanted a variance on the one side of the garage for five to four and a half feet, right? And offset.
Correct.
Point five. We're at point five to your guideline of five feet. So right, as proposed, it's point five.
Okay, as proposed.
Yes.
And the other was the process to the, the, exactly as you proposed.
Correct.
We have to read through each point of the criteria.
Okay.
It can be done through discussion if anybody wants to add.
Yeah, is it, sorry to interrupt motion, but cramming stuff. Yeah, I mean, looking through these points, not going through and we'll do that motion, but no, I completely understand, and I think the site condescend dictates the front setback. I think that's within the character of the neighborhood. I completely understand where the applicant's coming from, requesting the side setback and the impact to the property. However, I feel like asking for only leaving a half foot to the property line, six inches isn't enough to, you know, is barely enough to maintain the side of the garage without being on adjacent property could potentially, unlikely to, but could potentially impact development on adjacent properties. So I don't think that the side setback is necessarily required and is a little bit self-created. Just discussion, my thoughts on what's in front of us.
All right, in regards to side setback of a half a foot. Seems like the nature of the neighborhood, and so to me, the nature of the neighborhood, on that street in particular in, in the area around it in general. Buildings are are pretty close together. It seems that you know, seems that a half a foot could be acceptable. Like I said, in keeping with with the nature of the neighborhood, I'm looking through the pictures that were supplied, you know, obviously. You know, it's hard to tell just from the pictures what the actual distance is, but the distances are certainly less than five, maybe not as close as a half foot, but I don't see that as substantial. And I don't think, personally, I don't think that's a reason to, to not grant that that variance. That part of the variance.
And with, with regards to area variances, it is not as stringent a test as with regards to use variance.
Correct.
So there is that flexibility when you go through the various conditions, as long as some are met.
Correct. So you, I'm just gonna kind of comment on it from a legal perspective, but there's been discussion on the legal criteria. It appears as though with respect to some of the criteria, you know, it's kind of either gray area or balances a little bit one way than the other, but as Evie indicated, it is not a stringent test, so it's a balancing test. The motion that's on the table that's been made by Mr. Minor and seconded by Ms. Dundees is to approve both area variances granted. So with that discussion, the motion essentially balances those factors in favor of the applicant. So now that that's been clarified on the record, I, you can go ahead and throw a call vote.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, and so in regards to the motion that was made and seconded, Angie, if you don't mind, would, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Okay. So on the motion, how would you vote, Evie Dundes?
I vote to approve.
John Normal?
I vote to approve.
Stevie Minor?
Vote yes, approve.
Lindsay Zefton?
Deny.
Okay. So three.
All right, so we have three votes in favor and one against.
An extension, so it's majority, so for variance, correct.
It carries.
You.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You did good.
You sound very good.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to new business. This is case number PLZBA 2024-0005 for a property located at 500 Federal Street. The request is for a used variance. The applicant is Centerline Communications on behalf of AT&amp;T. Is there someone here this evening from Centerline? If you would, please, could you step up to the mic and please identify yourself?
My name is Brenda Glass Lewis with Centerline Communication. I live at 763 Eatonville Road in Herford, New York.
All right, welcome.
Well, AT&amp;T is making an application to lease space on the roof of the building at 500 Federal Street. Solid wireless telecommunications facility. And we're here to get our use variance, because the building is in the DMU zoning district, and it's not a permitted use.
There was some concern, and so some additional information was sent out. Fortunately, I closed that window in regards to thank you, to the the telecommunications law.
Yes, I did. So are you talking about the questions, the five questions that I was?
If you could just talk us through it briefly, I would appreciate.
Okay, so my concern was that they didn't provide financials for the used variance, but I was told that they have some exemption, exemption from, they exempted from providing financials for telecommunications, so I think they would want to talk on that.
If I could interject quickly, good evening, everyone. Dave Brett from Young Summer. I actually don't represent AT&amp;T. I represent owner of the building, Michael Fusco. It's a local LLC that just purchased the building from David Price. I guess it was about three weeks ago. So on my way to another meeting, so I actually typically represent Verizon Wireless on telecommunications facilities. And I just wanted to come in briefly and be heard. So there's a different standard for used variances for telecommunications facilities that use variance criteria derives from a case called Rosenberg, derives from another case consolidated Edison. But basically, because we're considered a public utility under decisional law in New York State, we don't, are not bound by the typical, sometimes we call it four or five-part use variance criteria with respect to going through use in a district proven by competent financial proof that there's no allowed, there is a use on this property. It's a six-story office building that's been there since, I'm gonna forget, 88, 93, whatever that exact date was. But, so the proposal is to put antennas on the roof of the building. They will not extend the height. These antennas are not taller than the tallest part of the building. But basically, they're there to serve the downtown Troy area with wireless service. And so the reason why there's a different standard is not because we're trying to say that nothing can go there. Certainly, something is there and is being used. But wireless facilities being a public utility, it's treated differently because public utilities need to be where they need to provide service. So if you think about it, the water tanks in the city, they, they don't go where you put them in a zone. They go on the high spots to provide pressure. National Ridge substations, they don't get zoned out because they need a substation in, I'll call it every neighborhood to provide service, same with gas pressure. So some years ago in 1998, I believe, 95, someone tried to put in a cell tower down at Dover, Dutchess County, and they were told, no, you don't start zoning. So it went up to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals said, no, the standard isn't that you need to rule out every single use in your use criteria. It's that you need to show that there's a need, show that why you need to provide the service. So you know, this isn't gonna be admittedly a one-meeting thing. We've gotta go through and make sure everybody's comfortable with this. But basically, what happens, whether it's Verizon or AT&amp;T, is we go through and we identify where we I can tell you personally, I know Verizon's looking downtown too. Verizon has antennas on the Kennedy Tower right essentially behind this building because we need to provide service downtown. We can't provide service from up on the hill from the water tank to have people's phone. So there is admittedly a different standard. I'll hand out our typical write-up on what that standard is, but basically it comes down to showing by RF proof that there's a need and that this facility serves the need. So at the end of the day, not to take Brenda drove a long way to, to, to let me take over, but you know, the board with counsel. Been a while since we've seen each other. Hello, yes, it took me a second to make connection. Saw each other. But basically, to take a look at this and have, be satisfied with, through your counsel that, that this is the correct standard and we're providing proof. I'm here really to protect my best friend's interests when we walk locally here with this building that we're trying to lease back. I'm here really to protect my best friend's interests when we walk locally here with this building that we're trying to lease back out, rebuild nearly empty office building, but this is a rental stream, but it's not just a rental stream for him. It provides service to the folks in the building and the surrounding downtown community where there's not good service. And okay, so we'll all say, I'm going up next to Cambridge at seven fifteen for a tower. Cambridge doesn't have service. We're putting, building a new tower because the phones really don't work. In downtown Troy, we can all walk out and expect our phones but the analysis is not that simple that our phones work. It's that the network continues to grow. We have RPI, we have Sage, we have booming downtown and residences and the phones need to work. So over time, the cell sites, the antennas you see on the top of the Kennedy Tower, on the water tank up at the top of the hill, I know we have Verizon antennas on Samaritan Hospital, probably on St. Mary's. There's some across in Waterfleet that provide a little service. McDonald's and Waterfleet. Senior building there has antennas that provides a little bit, but we can't keep shooting whether it's Verizon or AT&amp;T from a distance shooting in to provide coverage from, there's a new tower in Green Island that probably provides a little coverage. But we need a site centrally located that shoots out provided service. So over time, more people that are using our phones and my job in the nineties and two thousands used to be more difficult. Someone would say to me, I don't have one of those dams I never built. I got to imagine everybody up here and everybody out there, just phone and turn on work. That drives the need for more use, more coverage and more sites. And so the best way to do that is to put antennas on the roof of a building. Obviously, your code is a little quirky, kind of talks back and forth between sites, towers. I'll all day long agree with you that the downtown area is not the right spot for a new tower. Last tower we did in the city of Troy for Verizon is behind the old Troy-built manufacturing facility up in the Berg. That was a good spot in an industrial district. Downtown's not the spot for a tower, but you provide service by putting these slender antennas on the roof of a building, elevating them up where you can't really see them and then providing the service. So you know, your code just unfortunately flip flops between a new tower and a new facility where in the city of Albany, Waterfleet, I got, you can put antennas on rooftops all the, in fact, it's preferred. We don't want a new wall structure. We want you to use the existing wall structures and provide that service. And so I'm keeping one eye on the clock. Four people that can talk about this. One eye. Hands out. Try to be here more like this. Brenda can explain the project. Through that consider the correct standard and provide some aid for the zoning warrant issue. What we all get is an unusual question. We like to use variance system. Easily, but in this case, it's a different standard.
I'd like to make some inquiries here. Due respect to councils, very broad and generalized argument here. I think the requests for financial, even though there's a lesser standard, according to your arguments, helps us make an informed evaluation. Your friend and client has presented options of alternative locations. And those financials, as any business would do, would evaluate, you know, the potential financial implications of those options. We don't have any of that. We just have, well, this location is better here. This will provide better coverage here. Sounds very good, but with a financial analysis, even estimate, it would help us make an informed decision. That's.
We can try and provide that, but with all due respect, I don't, the typical financial analysis is I've got a lot that's zoned residential. I don't want to build residential on it. I need to build something else. And you go through for each and every use and say, by competent financial proof, we can't do that and make it work. And so as a result, we get to bounce ourselves out of the use category to something that's not allowed. Here, there's no, there's not going to be financial proof that the building needs the rent. I mean, we just closed on a loan with Trusco for whatever millions of dollars. They didn't lend us money because the building's not getting money. This is not a financial decision. This is services.
Well, it's service. It's an investment on structure. I mean, there are a lot of elements that can be estimated, in my opinion.
I'm just gonna interject if that'll help. I don't actually disagree with anything that Mr. Brennan has said as far as the telecommunications act and how it it is different for what they're requesting than somebody who's coming and wants to put like a commercial shop in a residential zoning district. It is different. I did send Angie some information earlier that's not as detailed to the specific project. So what I think would be helpful tonight, if everybody's okay with this plan, would be to ask questions and get information about what it is that exactly that they're proposing. And then between now and the next meeting, have, everybody can send me your legal questions or questions about the telecommunications act. I can do a memo to you, whatever works best. And then we can actually weigh in on the legal issues specific to antennas and the telecommunications act and our zoning code and how that's kind of all intertwined and works. Are you guys okay with that?
Of course.
Okay. And everybody here okay with that?
Yeah, just to have a quick question.
Legal or for them?
For them. What would be the proposed height of this antenna? I cannot hear you.
The tip of the antenna would be ninety-one feet, six inches. And the maximum pertinent, the highest point on that building is ninety-four point eight. The antennas aren't going to be taller. We're not increasing the height of the building in any way.
So the top of the antenna is roughly the height? So what you're telling?
Yeah, there's an HVAC unit that's on top of the roof and that is a pretty tall unit and it's ninety-four point eight feet. So starting from the top of the roof, the tip top of that HVAC unit is ninety-four point eight.
But the antenna would be on the flat part of?
Yeah.
Not on top?
Yeah, not on, no, not on top. They'd be on the roof and the highest point would be ninety-one.
Got it. Thank you.
I apologize. I'll come back to the next meeting. We'll do any questions.
I, I just have one request that I'll coordinate, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. There is a reference to the lease that has been worked out. Would it be feasible to have us look at a copy of that lease?
Certainly. Usually in my practice, I always react to the financial information about that, but I can tell you this is not a huge worry maker. I can tell you, you can ask Elena, you can see what we can tell you on the water tanks in the city of Troy. Say that it's comparable or less.
It would still be enlightening and help us make an informed decision.
We only want to admit our reasons with the fact reacted because maybe I'll go around and hear how many well, how many, city of Troy, we're on the Peter's Court, we're on the Hoover Tree. We go to, but there's, we can, we can revise the basis. And so I'm going to get your question about some bike.
Thank you.
Please be careful driving. All right. Let's go.
John? I just had a few other questions.
That's, that's where I was going, but obviously some of the questions should be answered by counsel. So certainly to the whole board, ask any question you want. We have to assume that some of them might be takeaways.
Oh, yeah, I only have one question to the applicant and the other.
Everyone on the board.
I think despite the books that we've made, you know, about various different facilities, there's already antennas on top of the Kennedy Tower, so you can provide us some justification as to why federal is by far the preferred site.
Yeah, and we provided it. The reason that this site is so particular is I mean, they really are kind of interested in this location.
And Kennedy doesn't provide that same. Okay.
I'm on.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Questions for you? Um, I understand that the antennas are shorter than the HVAC unit on top of the building. It's my understanding that those types of elements on top of the building aren't counted towards the height requirement. Is that interpretation in the code accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next question is if I noted through the rest of our zoning code where wireless is just allowed, it's under a special use permit. Can we grant this variance but also require the applicant to obtain a special use permit like is required in other?
No.
Okay.
Are those your two questions?
Yeah.
I have a question about the terminology you just used in regards to existing equipment installed up the hill at RPI. You talked about offloading from RPI. Is that just offloading capacity from the equipment that's installed up there or will the equipment in RPI be taken down and that's what's causing the need? It's offloading capacity. Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this point?
Do you mind if I just ask?
Of course not. Go ahead.
And it may be in the paperwork. Is it the intention to allow for co-location on the antennas? Okay, I'd have to double check our code to see if there is a requirement for it, because if there is a requirement for it, would you be able to modify to allow for it? Okay, I'll look into that and double check.
How do they do that?
So it is.
I have a question for our counsel.
Yes, no, I can multitask. Go ahead.
If we grant, if we grant the variance to locate the towers on top of this building, that, that variance is specific to this equipment? And so if another cell carrier wanted to put equipment on the top of that building, they would have to come for their own variance or does?
They would have to get a separate variance, although I don't want to get too much into it because it's not so much related to this, but there is, you know, in the telecommunications act, it essentially says that you can't discriminate against providers. So once you approve it for one, if somebody else wants to go up there, it is going to be a lot harder to deny that because of the precedents that being set. So essentially by voting in favor of this project, you're saying that you believe that this is a proper location for this and this type of proposals being granted. So if almost, you know, something similar comes for the same location, but a different provider, it's, you can't discriminate and say because we, you know, because we've already approved it for one, we're not going to so just something to keep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Given that we have all these legal should we bog on this or table it?
It's going to be tabled. The applicant's already agreed to to table and extend it to the next meeting so that we can get a lot of these questions answered, but I wanted you to take time to get like the factual questions answered so that you have that and then we'll deal with the legal stuff between now and the next meeting.
Do we have to move to table it?
Yes.
Okay.
So if the questions, if everybody's questions have been answered, move on.
Okay, and so if there are no other questions from the board, I'm going to ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? And there is. Thank you. Please, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Please step up, introduce yourself, tell us where you live.
First, I just for the record, I just want to say that, you know, this is not something that we, we have some credentials and things for the building. We did not seek this out. This is something that they came up and they visit where we want to put it. We're not hoping to putting out there that, hey, we got a big building on our roof. It's kind of already came along of a site that they basically approached. Kind of happened. We're not in a position to, you know, we didn't go in there and say we want to form what we want to be based to that. The process happened, which has been happening, like they were explaining all around the city. After I come in, so for example, like I think you know, we did, we probably spent a lot of money into that site. I'm beginning, we are working with the city and planning and going of a lot of other projects that are going to be happening around that. It's part of park nuts, lighting, new landscaping, need to renovate that building. It is a full example of that people going along. So we're trying to make it downtown better place and clean it up that spot a little bit. So coming out to the flowers and the hotel that we had across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going for it.
Thank you. Angie, is there anyone participating remotely at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. And so is there anyone here, here in the room that wishes to speak in opposition to this matter? Okay, seeing no one, thank you. And so at this point, given that, pardon me, given that there's been some, some new material introduced earlier today from our own council and now here this evening from counsel for the applicant, I'm going to ask that someone on the board, please make a motion to table the application until a future meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. I believe we can, we can vote on this by a simple show of hands. We don't need to call the roll. All those in favor of tabling this issue until a future meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Please say nay. And so at this point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank you for your patience. I hope you have a safe trip back to Herkimer. Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we've all got material.
Pardon me again. And now we're going to discuss PL CBA two zero two four zero 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 seven. This is a request for an area variance for a property at number sixty-one hundred and thirteenth street. The applicant is Energy Catalyst. Is there someone here from Energy Catalyst to speak? If you would, please approach the microphone. If you would, please approach the microphone uh and tell us your name. Understood, and um it it says in the application that um the maximum gross floor area for the use in a mixed-use one district is twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, the building in question is just over eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. Will will you be using all of that square footage for manufacturing? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything more that you would tell us about this project? Thank you.
So in in you know, um. You will be the only. Our product is also geared specifically specifically for the. Obviously in the. Work. Control and all of it. Only going to have a lot of these boards, radiators. We are the only guy to do the. I then reduce all of that. We got to solve. Only our two. I is designing. I admire a lot of. All of them is on already. Um, but obviously. You know. Over the next five years, you need to care about employees for the site. How many about? Zero. That will be a bit. Being uh working within the. Um, which are areas. Um, of those um. So. Application to also. Things offer. That's so. Bottom, we're all pretty criminal in country. Also. I spare. And we also work in the world. Scene center. Roll in some of those others. Meaning uh continuation and allow. You could see to. To. Often. Not just for them, you know, probably self concerning. Then part. Greater. We uh in the uh playboard, we are in the two neighbors. Those who are designers. For. Well, we. Down till. We should be funding you now. And. The. The money. Really. Do you? This way. There's you got a two meetings. Um, but it is. What does to. So sorry, I mean. We. This for. One. And then I'll maybe didn't see. This uh this building, it was used previously on. Um, it's about the right size for a little bit. Recent things over the whole time. Be there. I mean. States. And um. Yeah, we we look forward hopefully to uh. Anything.
Thank you. Before I open uh the the this portion of the meeting up to questions from the board, Angie, if you don't mind, can you explain some information that uh you put up on the screen for us?
I think uh Evie asked me what part of the code this was uh this variance was uh referring to. And I I just wanted to highlight that. So they are requesting for. First lighting industry. Here. Reuse of an existing structure. And there's some, sorry, uh on the special use permit, which they will be um. I think they already went to planning for this special use permit. But because of this provision of the code that says that the building has to uh they this particular use has to be shouldn't exceed two thousand five hundred square feet. And already the existing structure is about eighteen thousand. That is why they are here today, because it's over their limits.
Okay.
It's on the code, yeah.
So just so that I'm aware, um or that I'm clear, sorry. The planning approved special use permit?
They are yet, no, they haven't. Have they approved yet? I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah. The next meeting. Yeah.
Okay, and so the reason it has come for zoning is still a a a traditional area variance.
Yes.
In in the number of square feet. Okay. Thank you. And now I'm going to have to ask council again. Given that uh planning approval is still pending, would we be excuse me, exceeding our authority to go forward without their approval of the special use?
No, you can move forward and just make a um contingent on receiving the special use permit with planning.
I was just about to ask you that. Thank you. And without further ado, I'm going to uh open it up to the rest of the board for questions, please. If does anyone have a question for the applicant? Please go right ahead.
Thank you. I see there's a couple of structures on the site. There's the main building. It looked like there was another building that was attached to it. Then uh storage or warehouse building. Is that square footage? Because I don't see it listed on the site plan. Is that including all of those structures?
Yeah, so they're actually.
Okay.
Did you said three buildings? Because.
Well, we have. The concrete structure, but it's really one building because something is attached to it.
I'm not going to pull out three of it. Four years ago.
Um, and again, we we were supplied a copy of your site plan. Uh, has in your discussion with the planning commission, have they requested anything that would change what we're currently looking at?
So as far as this, we report those for not. Mission. All we're looking to do is. To use it for. So we will, you know, moving forward, it's possible. Interesting.
All right, I'm going to clarify. Has the planning commission asked you to make any changes to the site plan? Specifically, you mentioned fifty employees seeing twenty-one parking spots. So like, that's something that, I mean, it's not necessarily in our preview. I just want to make sure that we know what the planning commission has asked.
So. Our changes. That's the one thing that they mentioned. We have needs, so here are the possibilities.
And you're leasing this site currently? So are you operating it in the facility right now? Okay. Not operating. That's it.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um, based on the nature of the business, are there any safety uh concerns or issues? And how do you deal with them?
Yeah, so in general, um, you know. She read. The. Brain like. So. Always. You. It's all. Process. Post. If you like, she needs to help. Run through. This. Whether it's in the business. No. Uh, when you're. When it. Not. It will be, you can't know that. What is that? I mean. You mean how come? All. People with on. Script. Being for each of us are all uh sweating. So in the in the facility previously, they were welding, sweating. And. Looking for. And that. They both feel like. They're different than the former. And then, you know, we will do that. Fire up. Water. Free. The years.
Um, I just had a couple more questions on your environmental short form. Um, you indicated yes, that it's consistent with an adopted comprehensive plan. Oh, okay, and.
Hopefully they want to stop filling it out.
The the default.
Yeah.
Options, yeah. At the conference, they indicated issues with that. Uh, what about uh um substantial increase in traffic? You checked yes?
To that. Probably. Just talking our. Please. Will be a. Certainly even buzz and use years ago. I understand. So I think. Use with.
Um, I have one last question. Um, you checked that uh uh the proposed action uh would meet or exceed state energy code requirements?
That's true. Um, one of the things. It means that's. We'll all. If we all. Mission.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. I have a couple quick. Um, you stated that you possibly will have fifty employees, correct?
Yeah.
When you, when you get up and running. Have you decided that maybe you could work shift work for parking or anything? Like a day shift and a night shift?
Yes.
Or would that cost too much and okay?
So a lot of um, one thing I should I should mention is energy balance is uh it's not suited to be on. I'll get back. For.
Right.
We don't want to drill rigs. Drill it, give their last. Part of it. This is very difficult for fish and my shoes.
Right.
So uh our team has the vehicles that will go out into the field. Now we'll be able to help. Roots. So. Pretty significant.
Well, just um just a minor, but when you say you create these pumps, tell me how big. With with your hands, how big is the pump? When it's, when the product is finished, about the size, length and width? Okay, so I say that because I used to work on a bender first at a college works. So. And we did heater cores, so I was trying to get a, what did that look like? The main, uh what what is going to be your main stock? Is it going to be steel or copper?
Yeah, so in terms uh volumetrically, so.
Well, all right. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Volume that's probably trying to like you know, the team employees is it's all but it was I was just a single large party. It's very exciting that we can load up with 30 $600,000.
And so
you, you're doing a lot of
And you stay on top of the 50 employees. Do your best to keep that contained to the city of Troy and try to hire as many as you can for locality that are
Yeah, yeah. So the nice thing about it's there's a lot of different models. So there's, there's some relative level work that we can hire. Usually I was still with and one thing I did in the mission that we do have and we're doing an R and D project. Recently that goes to, you know, this though, like a full writer.
Very good.
Various levels.
Thank you.
You have another question?
It, the, from when the building was originally built in its current size and was used, you know, our zoning code has changed and it requested smaller footprint. And I, I, I am inferring that that was expected to have a lesser intensity. You're right on adjacent to a residential zone. You've got three access points to the facility, 113th, ninth, and then the alley. Um, so I'm just a little bit concerned about the, the intensity of the use. So can you estimate for us? I mean, I'm sort of getting a sense of how many employees might be coming to the site, but how are like half of them going to be then immediately departing on trucks on facilities? How often are you going to get deliveries? How do you anticipate people actually accessing the site on, you know, on those three roadways?
Probably there's quite a lot of there's definitely. Generally, at least the way you're right. It's my sound like others. Will drive to so that in mind. And I think we let's see, probably now. This is slow.
Yeah, I mean, from accessing this, what is the, the largest truck that brings in goods? And then how does it get to the site?
Yes, the largest truck. Right now, he would it means we're loading off. But one of our goals is to build smoothly. And the goal there is to be able to carry cars through you know, 100.
Ninth of.
Well, it's my larger that way
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. At this point, I'm gonna dispense with asking if there's anyone to speak in favor and opposition. Angie, I'm gonna assume that there's no one participating online. So with all that being said, I think it's time to close the discussion and move on to the SECR.
Has the planning commission done SECR or do you need to do this separately? We're locating efforts.
This is just for the variance secret.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
And they have filled out some documents. Uh, the review. Okay. Mr. Chair, in regard to PLZBA 2024 0007, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jack McCann seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And with that, SECR is adopted. And now I'm gonna, as the members of the board, please, please make a motion in regards to the requested area variance.
Anybody?
Anyone at all?
All right. I'll go through. I move that the board approve the variance with the condition of planning's approval with the modifications they've or inquiries they've requested responses to. And my, our motion here being based on the following findings of fact, uh, the variance request based on the information provided and the information presented today will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties if it is granted, especially based on uh, the long-term plans with regards to the different loading locations and the staffing, scheduling and parking as indicated in your description. Um, just as based on the area you have. Uh, let's see now, the variance not appear to be achieved by revising the proposal. Variance is not substantial. And based on your description of, of the history of the prior business that was there, uh, the variance will not have respect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood and the variance is not self-created. Because you're just trying to establish the business. And in a location that's currently on that concludes my motion.
This, this is contingent on planning approval, right?
Yes, I did.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct. And with, with the, based on the additional information that they requested.
Does anyone want to second the vote?
I'll second.
Okay, we, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there a need for any discussion of the motion? Okay, hearing none. Angie, if you don't mind, could you call the roll for the vote, please?
Evie Dunnis? Uh, vote to approve this John Normal?
I vote yes to approve.
Steven Minor?
Yes, true.
Lizzy Zefton?
Yes, prove.
Jack McCann?
Thank you all. There you are. We wish you the very best. Thank you for your patience.
Enjoy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Do you call this?
Um, we have a, a motion. We turn to a second.
Second.
All those who think, they say aye.
Aye.
No one in opposition? Thank you all.